Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Please turn your phones on, vibrate, uh, cut them off whatever convenient, whatever com-
Whatever convenient to you at this time. All right? Roll call or off, a roll call?
Ms. Trainor? Ms. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Harvis? Ms. Noy? Ms. George?
Here.
Ms. Grantley?
Here.
All right. Next we entertain a, a motion from the previous meeting for the minutes.
I motion we accept the minutes from the November ninth meeting as presented.
A second.
If the motion is seconded and of course no mission is not, you ready to vote? Signify saying aye.
Aye.
May likewise motion carry. Okay? If any person in agreement by any decision of the board, you may within fifteen days after such decision appeal to the second court jurid- which have jurisdiction. Right. Matt?
Thank you, Chairman. Want to welcome you all today. We do have three items on your agenda. Two are regarding the same location and we'll go right into that. The first item today is a request for a variance to the front setback. This is at four eight First Avenue. The applicant is the Cotton District represented by Richard Patton. The subject property is zone C two, which is office commercial. The applicant is requesting a variance of nine feet from the minimum twenty-five foot front setback to allow a building to sit within sixteen feet of the front. So here is what you see is being proposed for this lot. You'll see six units. The kind of flat, flatter units are two bedroom units, I believe, and then two middle or one bedroom units. You have the two parking structures and storage structures. Those are what would be encroaching into the setback. And then you have an outdoor pavilion here at the back. This is what a lot of people call middle housing or a cottage courtyard, bungalow court type development. These are just some of the plans and I won't spend a lot of time on these because it's not too relevant in this part. But you see the one bedroom units with living downstairs, bedroom on the top of the work area. And kind of just a general rough elevation. And the two bedrooms, again, living on the first floor. These are a little bit larger. The first ones were about a thousand square feet, I believe. These are closer to fifteen hundred square feet. With two bedrooms on the second floor. Porch and house. And so, again, what we're really talking about here is how far are these buildings setback off of the, off of First Avenue, off of the actual right of way, not from the street? And so the, the minimum for C two actually falls back because this is residential to the R two or the R five zoning district. The R five zoning district requires a twenty-five foot front setback. But what we do in, in many historic areas, which this is kind of right on the edge of, of kind of a historic although undesignedated district, we look at what the existing setback is for the properties around there. And so you have the, I believe, what was once a video warehouse Salvation Army and is now a daycare, which kind of sits a little bit further off the side lot line with parking in the front. But as you move into the neighborhood, you see that the buildings here sit approximately fourteen to sixteen feet off of the front property line there of the street. I apologize, I should have shown you a picture of what, kind of where those are, but we felt that this was in keeping with the, the kind of neighborhood characteristic, characteristic setback of this area and so are recommending a, a positive approval of the variance. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have and the applicant is represented here today as well.
Matt, did we hear from any homeowners surrounding this?
No.
Matt, how long ago was the variance changed? Because if it, like you say, the neighborhood, the houses are closer, how long ago did we extend that?
I have no clue when that was zoned to C two. It's probably been quite a while.
Okay.
We, you know, we have in some other zoning districts, particularly the R two zoning district, which is what most of the north side of the store district is, there is a specific carve out in that zoning district that says basically, for the front setback, you take the average of the setbacks along adjacent to that or along that same street and then look at the setback for the buildings. We don't have anything in this area specifically related to that, kind of covering that same thing, but in this case, I, I do think although these could be set back to a full twenty-five feet, I think pulling them up closer kind of creates that same wall, but...
Okay, yeah, that makes sense.
Matt, is the applicant here?
Yes, I believe he is here. He has representative as well.
Do we have anything else from the board? Okay, we'd like to hear from the applicant. Please come up and to the podium and state your name.
Richard Patton, one oh eight South Eighth Street. And, and we're trying to, that's a little kind of a, it's been a little pocket that's been kind of undeveloped for a little while. We're trying to build in a piece, kind of make it a whole pocket neighborhood in that area. And to also offset some of the parking, the city's going to require us across in the Stern Park to kind of do some parking along that edge to, to match up with the parking. And then the structures will match, the parking structures there will match the housing that would, the design of the housing. And it does kind of match up with, there's two houses on that corner and we'll put those in line with those two houses.
Just for clarification, the parking variance is the next item, so we can discuss that at that time.
Okay, do we hear anything?
I don't have any questions.
No question? Okay, sir. Thank you. At this time, we open the public hearing. Do we have anybody else to, to speak for or against? Okay. We are closed the public hearing. All right. Put it up here in front of the board.
I make a motion to approve the nine foot variance setback as recommended by the, by the department.
All right, do I get a second?
Second.
There been motion and second, then of course no mission. Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Signify saying aye.
Aye.
May likewise motion carry. All right.
Excuse me. Second item concerns also the same property and, and also deals with some of the, the topic that Mr. Patton alluded to, which is a request for a variance from the parking requirement. As we, under the current ordinance, the development is required to have, all, all residential is required to have two spaces per unit except for, there's some allowances in the downtown zoning dis- or urban core zoning district, which this is not part of, just to be clear. It is somewhat adjacent, but not, not part of that C one zoning district. And then there's some, also allowances where the, the housing may specifically deal with senior housing, where they may not have an active car or need a car. In this case though, the, the applicant is proposing, instead of providing two spaces onsite, they would provide one space onsite. And so you see here, there are six units with a total of, I believe it's ten bedrooms. And so they're proposing to show six onsite parking spaces. This did go before the planning commission for conditional use during the conditional use component and, and with some review by our city engineer, we did look at the possibility of requiring instead of all the parking onsite, to have the applicant build on-street parking basically on the street there, so across the street here at Stern Park, to actually move the road and curving lines so that there could be enough room to place six additional spaces parallel across the street there. The planning commission did approve the request for conditional use. Of course, that was all subject to the zoning board also providing a variance that would allow that as well. We've looked at this and kind of doing a little bit of research, these types of units, typically when they're, they're located in a downtown area, typically do utilize less parking, but I, I can't say for certain that, of course, that there will only be one car in each, each unit. We also did point out that there is some limited ability to have kind of after hours parking at Stern Park or wherever park as well. With that being said, we, we do recommend approval of this, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Matt, can you elaborate? I know you don't have a map of the, the park across, or maybe you do, picture or something across the street. I, I guess I'd like to understand a little bit more about the proposed parking on the other side of the street.
Sure, let me, I should have pulled that up. I, I thought I had it in here. Let me just one second. So this is what the city engineer kind of drew in showing how it could be accommodated. The road there is approximately twenty-two feet in width, which is a little narrow for on-street parking as well. We, we typically look at somewhere around nine, ten feet wide at least per lane. So what he's proposed is adding, I believe, an extra, additional five feet, kind of right here between the existing drive or existing curb line and the, the existing sidewalk in the park. That would allow it to come in and then place again those, some additional spaces there on the street.
And how many spaces does that get?
This is six.
That's six?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I see it now.
I noticed when I rode by there that there is a no parking sign across the street from this lot. What it, why is that?
I believe that's because with the park, there have been people just kind of parking there.
Okay.
On the side. I'm not certain, but like I said, it is a narrow street and so if you have people there constantly parking in the travel lane, then it definitely probably could get a little difficult to navigate through there. It is a very, I want to say, it, it's fairly low traffic.
Right.
Street, but some people do use it as a cut through off of Second and Fifth.
Yeah, so a couple of questions about the parking situation. We live over here and one of the things that we've noticed is even like what you're saying, where we have a lot of no parking, but the school bus situation that comes down, so the route is there, it stops at the, at the corner and then takes a right on First. Things like that. We also have advanced auto that comes down with eighteen, their trucks, and they unload right there at the dock. If we were to be, so it's a very narrow situation there. I guess where it says here that you guys are planning on to look on the overall parking requirements, that would be my only concern is when the parking goes in, if there's only going to be six that are, are for this, how is it that the parking would be developed before or after the development happens or is it going to be happening at the same time?
So if the, if the board approves this variance with the, with the requirement, then they would be, there would only be six parking spaces onsite. And then they would, based on the planning commission's previous approval, they would have to build these six additional spaces on the side of the road, basically. If the board does approve this, then they would, they would have to just re-engineer the site, whether that's remove some units and add some parking spaces or come up with some, some sort of different plan.
So the parking's not happening?
So what, what we're looking at is, we're looking at a, when I, I, I guess I should clarify, when I say we're looking at the parking requirements, we're looking citywide at parking requirements, whether two spaces per unit is correct. Because what we found out is a lot of times in, in certain types of units, they don't need two spaces. About, I think it's about thirty-five or forty percent of the households in Opelika are single tenant households, meaning that there's only one person living in that household. So, and that tends to be less in single family areas than it is other places. So people living in townhouses or multifamily or mobile homes or things like that, a lot of times typically only have one parking space or one car. That's not to say they don't have friends over and that they don't occasionally need additional parking, but that is something we are looking at, we're just not, not sure exactly what that number is right now. But if, if the variance is approved, then like I said, they would be approved with the, the units as proposed and the six onsite spaces plus the six offsite spaces.
And the developer is responsible for putting those spaces in on the, on the street? Is that correct?
Yes, so the developer is, is a part of this, the developer would be responsible for putting in these spaces. I think the other thing that kind of is an offsite type thing that they would be responsible for is repairing the sidewalk in front of this that has busted up pretty badly.
And these spots are, would they be designated specifically for that development or are they public parking?
They would be.
So they're open to anybody?
We don't designate on-street parking.
That's what I thought.
For anyone, so at, at least not this time. So they would be open to, for anyone to park in.
Okay.
Is there any future or talks about increasing the parking at Stern Park where it would be a bigger lot or to make it, to make it more? Because right now, there is that entrance on Fifth that goes in. Is there, is there anything that would extend that parking over there for people to know that they, like if they're, if they are on First, that there is parking? Because I do know that around the park, there is a lot of no parking because of what you said, people were parking everywhere. Is there any, do you know of anything that is saying that they're going to open up more parking at the park?
I mean, I think that's definitely something we can look at if, if there needs to be more parking at the park, we can definitely, definitely take a look at that. They did designate a small area on the far side of the park that, I think there's a tree there and they kind of cut out another section there that one or two cars could probably fit under, but I don't know that there are any immediate plans to make any additional parking, but again, if there's a, a need for it at a certain time or whatever, that, that's something we can look at. Or again, these, these spaces could potentially be used by people also going to Stern Park as well.
Okay. You have anything else, Matt?
No, sir. Again, the applicant and their representative are here.
Okay, the applicant? State your name, sir.
Parker Lewis, Parker Lewis with Hydro Engineering Solutions, we're the civil engineer on the project, Mr. Patton. Just to answer your question, I think maybe a little bit, maybe to sort of complete that thought, as Matt said, at this board, if, if you were to grant the variance, that requires six onsite spaces, but the subsequently, the, the sort of partnered, I guess, planning commission approval requires that we, we build the, the condition of that approval was that we build the onsite, I mean, the on-street parking as well. So they will be built at the same time.
At the same time, okay.
Before there's anyone living.
Yeah, okay.
It will be part of the overall project.
Okay.
So they will be constructed at the developer's cost across the street. They will be public parking. With this being so close to downtown and the nature of the cottage sort of product, we don't think we're going to need the full twelve sort of parking spaces, two, two per unit. So even I think, I think even though they're public spaces, if for some reason, you know, we needed those spaces, I think our folks would probably be parked there most of the time, but, but we're really sort of feeling like, you know, we'll, we'll need eight spaces or so, you know, depending on the tenants, you know, who moves in and stuff, so. But they will be constructed at the, you know, during the project, prior to anybody living there. And then, and then we'll, as Matt showed on the drawing, that's the plan, is to sort of bump that, bump that curb line out to kind of get these cars sort of out of the travel lane for that parallel parking. And, and they'll be, they'll be nine feet wide spaces by, typical parallel spaces twenty-two feet long as opposed to eighteen feet long, so you've got that maneuverability. So do you have to answer any other questions as well?
Any more questions? All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
We now open the public hearing. Okay? Come up to the mic, sir, state your name.
Sir, my name is Justin Greger. I live at the house next door at four oh four First Avenue. I guess I'm just here to really take part in this, not really sure what to expect in it. The little, I believe the picture of the street and the house. There's a large green tree right there. Behind that tree, there's a driveway that separates two properties or something like that. That little black car that you see right there, it belongs to me. And there's steps that go right there to my house. My only concern would be that those several parking spots are right out my front door. And that, the only other questions I suppose I have are more about the distance between the cottages and my house next door. How much space is between those two? Some of the blueprints are unable to tell how much space is given in certain places. Those are the only two things that I have questions about.
And, sorry, I should have written your name down. What is your, tell me your name again?
Justin.
Justin.
Greger, G R E G A.
Justin, when you're, when you're entering and leaving your driveway, I'm assuming you're pulling in forward, do you have room up near your house to, to turn your car around and pull out?
I do, I have a driveway. I have a driveway on the other side as well, which is still just kind of a troubled area. I'm trying to redevelop this house a little bit on my own. I might have to put a driveway in there, it's a little unusable at the moment. But, yeah, I have my own driveway for that, so I won't really have to use the parking on the street if I can get that driveway finished.
On the other side, that's not visible on this?
No, yes, sir, it would be to the other, just right.
Above your car?
Yes, sir, above the car.
So you have a driveway that's behind that tree that we can't see and then there's another driveway on the other?
I believe that driveway on, that's behind the tree actually belongs to the property if there are eight.
Okay.
I think that's for property.
So your driveway is a little bit beyond where these parking spaces would be?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
But it just is directly in front of the house.
In the house, yeah.
So, Justin, are you saying that you're concerned about the aesthetic of what this would look like on the side of your house with the co- like with the parking structure or what?
I suppose a little bit. The area's been pretty nice over the last few years. It's come a long way. It's had a little bit more family activity in the area. There's a lot of people who love to walk their dogs and have their kids outside, walking up and down that sidewalk in particular. Lots of scooters and skateboards and people walking their dogs right along that line because it's a dog park.
So this, I don't know if you can see it. This is your house and that's your, your car?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's gone a long way since that, that's an old picture.
Yeah, this is three or four years ago.
Yeah, it's been a while since that house was there.
Is the blue house, did, is that what's torn down now to have the vacant lot?
But that driveway you're on there, that driveway belongs to the blue house, right? That belongs on the other lot?
To Richard's.
Do we know that?
Yes. That is, that is the part of that, that lot.
Okay. And beyond, so where the applicant's, this house is gone, was there another house to the left of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, there's a vacant lot there, okay.
There was a house there, I believe, at one point.
And then that's the old video store behind there?
Yes, sir, this is the video store back here.
Okay, gotcha. So Matt, going back to the layout of the six spaces, is there flexibility in when there, where those are located? Are those centered already on the applicant's lot?
I think we, we did try to center them directly kind of on the applicant's lot. I mean, there's probably some flexibility on kind of where they would go. It's possible they could be, I think, I think there's a pole right here, so it's possible one probably could be shifted down here before you get into the, the area, but...
I'm not sure what it would change, it would be too much of a...
There's a pole right there.
Yeah, so I mean, there's, I think three shown between this gap and then three on this side. It's possible that one could be shifted down this way if you, we'd have to look at it with the engineer.
Okay, do you have any more question for?
I think he did have a question about the setback and typically the, I think I'm here, the distance from the rear of the house to the, the rear property line is shown at ten feet.
That currently meets the setback requirement.
That meets the setback requirement, so now there would be, there would be a buffer required along this side. And likely, I would think, just with space limitations, I think they'd be looking at something that's fairly shallow, that goes a bit taller or a fence or something like
just with space limitations, I think they'd be looking at something that's fairly shallow, that goes a bit taller or a fence or something like that, but I'd probably defer to the applicant on what they're proposing.
Our goal is to do, uh, fencing and landscaping there.
Richard, can you come up and, so you can be on the mic?
And so knowing that Gregor, Mr. Greger and Angela, they, they kind of look both right there. We're going to design, it'll be a combination of landscaping and privacy fence, and we're happy to work with them, what they, they want to see, once we'll be there, but, um, we're, the back of those houses will have a little patio, so we want to kind of separate, make sure they're not looking into their yards and vice versa, so we're going to design something that is, that is, um, you know, privacy fencing along with landscaping.
So will that go all the way down into the parking structure as well where he, so like, but that was, I think that was your question too, right? Was what was going to be the barrier of the, where the parking was proposed, what was, what that was going to look like?
Right, with that driveway.
Where the driveway would be and then, because the parking's going to go parallel to your house to kind of see, so that's what he's saying, that they're proposing, that there would be something in between, so you're not, right?
Well, yeah, I was curious about the size of space, so about ten feet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, yeah, we, we will, um, I, I think also for the value of the, the, the people that are going to buy these homes, they want the same thing, which will, um, for them too, so. And these will, just so you know, these, these are going to be, um, you know, we're selling these houses, so we want ownership in these houses.
All right, any more questions? We'd like to thank y'all. Okay. At this time, we're gonna open and close the public hearing. All right, put it down here in front of the board.
Uh, I mean, I'm open to the, uh, the discussion that you guys have, I, uh, I like the development, I, I, I certainly want to be respectful of, of the surrounding areas, uh, and the, and the neighbors, this is a unique development and I, I, I like it, um.
Yeah, I'll, I can say on behalf of just the neighborhood in itself, um, we are respecting, I think, as well that, you know, this has been a vacant lot. Richard has, um, done a lot on First Avenue, he's somebody that's got some very creative ideas about how to utilize. I know that businesses do thrive when there's more living in, so I know that this would be, it, it is walking, there's the art house now, um, that's there as well, there's at the event center and, um, just with, so I'm, I'm a, I like the idea that there's, there'll be more people, of course, it's the traffic, the parking, um, what Mr. Greger just said, you know, just how this all looks as far as, because people, this is a residential neighborhood. Um, there are families and kids that live there, but of course, then you have commercial, it's, so you have the park and you've got these things. Growing pains everywhere, I think, when things like this are being, but, um, I think if they're addressing the parking, which I think is, if I'm stating correctly too, that's a big concern for, you know, how this is going to look or how many people are going to be there, um, how narrow those roads are at the moment with the turn, because you can't, the, um, i- if you come down north Fourth Street where the advanced auto is and you're driving on North Fourth, to take a left, it's a very ve- it's, it's a lot more narrow, it's really more of a one-way, so everyone does turn right. And with Second Avenue getting congested in the afternoon, there is more traffic around that time, it's not a heavy traffic av- you know, unless there's an event at the park or the art house. I do want to be respectful of what Mr. Greger's just said, that, what it looks like, that's on the side of this house, these are old historic-looking hu- houses and this is a new development. But I know that what they just stated, that there would be some buffering and some privacy to separate that part of it. I think just my bigger concern for the neighborhood is just the, you know, the parking, making sure that that's being addressed as far as the traffic of vehicles.
Just to make sure I'm absolutely clear, the, the conditional use approval that the planning commission approved, if we were to approve this variance, that would kick into effect that there would be formal on-street parking, okay? Just making sure.
That is.
And that was my biggest question.
The planning commission approval, and that would, as Mr. Lewis said, I didn't understand the question, I think.
Sorry, I probably, I might not have clearly stated that.
I think you're fine, uh, that would be, that would be installed as a condition, be installed prior to anything received, any sort of certificate of occupancy, so.
So we don't need to s- we don't need to clarify that?
You can, if you'd like to add a condition of approval, that's fine, it doesn't, doesn't hurt.
Okay.
That is already a condition of approval through the planning commission.
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion to go ahead and approve, um, the development on First with Cotton Seed District, or the Cotton District, um.
So the variance of the minimum parking spaces?
Yes, the, yes, with one parking space.
A second.
We got a motion, we got a second, and a question or omission, if not, you're ready to vote?
I would like to make one statement a- as, as, since we're in the discussion, is, and this is not, um, contingent on anything, but I think it would be good if the developer, the applicant, would work with Mr. Greger. Um, if there is any availability in, in kind of shifting that parking at all just to accommodate the, the neighbors. I mean, I, I, I know, I'm not stipulating that as part of the, this, this motion, but I'd just like to make that comment.
All right, motion or second? Has been questioned or omission, known, you're ready to vote, signal by, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, likewise, motion carried.
The, uh, last item we have for you today is a request for a variance, uh, for a setback for an accessory structure, this is located on, uh, North Gate Drive, uh, it's located on the corner of Oak Bowery and North Gate at seventeen ten North Gate Drive. The applicant is requesting a three-foot variance from the five-foot, uh, side yard setback required for a shed in, in the backyard of, of property. The applicant is, uh, Kyle and Lee Keen, uh, and so here you kind of see the location generally, the red area right here is kind of where the, uh, general, uh, shed is. And I will note it is there, uh, the applicants had a previous shed at this location that was quite a bit smaller. Uh, and working with a local con- or local, uh, sales group that sells these sheds, uh, they, they purchased a new one and, uh, I think there was some miscommunication about either who was going to get the permit or, or how it was done, and so the, the shed did get placed there prior to, uh, SAP being able to look at it and approve it. The, uh, the proposed shed is, is fairly large, although it doesn't, uh, exceed what is allowed there, it's twelve by thirty-two, so it's a a fairly, uh, significant shed, you kind of see it here located behind these trees, there's also now a fence here located there as well. We reviewed this with the applicant, met with them onsite, uh, at least once, kind of looking at alternative locations where this could be placed to make sure it's compliant. Uh, there is, uh, definitely some room in the backyard, you see here, uh, what you'll notice though is there is some slope to the yard, it doesn't look very significant, although because this thing is thirty-two feet long, I think by the time it's spread out, uh, you would, according to the, the installer, you would have about one side of that, I, I think on blocks about four feet in the air, which they did not feel was, was safe. We, we've looked at it, we would, we would not have approved this location to start with, uh, just to be completely honest, we would have required it be either set in or shifted around. Uh, I, we will note that, I mean, it is here, uh, if you look at it or drive, had a chance to drive by it now, uh, as you can see, there's a, a fairly significant fence there and, uh, some significant existing landscaping, so it's not as visible as it, as it likely would be. But we did want to bring this to the board and just make sure that, uh, kind of get your, your either blessing on it or, or requirement that it, it be moved to a, an alternative location. Uh, we have not received any, uh, any feedback from any of the adjoining property owners and, uh, the applicants, uh, the Keens are here today.
Okay, we'd like to have from the applicant. Come up to the mic and state your name, sir, please.
Kyle Keen. Um, so I wanted to just kind of, you know, go over the, the, the timeline a little bit of, of what happened and everything, I think Matt explained it fairly well, but, um, but when we went to Action Buildings, um, and spoke with them, they, um, I, I specifically asked the question, is there anything we need to do with the city of Lulika to, to make sure this is okay? And, and his exact words were, we'll take care of it. And so, you know, we didn't come out here knowingly, try to, you know, go against an ordinance and, and, you know, try to put it here just because that's how we liked it. Um, it was, you know, where, where the old one was, and so we didn't know that there was a, an issue with it. Um, and then, like I said, they, they said they would take care of it. Um, when they came out, um, a- after, um, uh, Matt came onsite with us, you know, we walked the lot and everything. Um, the, when the guy, when the Action Buildings came out, um, to move it to the place that, that Matt had proposed, um, you know, they, they came ready to move and everything, and, and when they got there, they were like, no, this is, this is not safe. Um, because of the, you know, over four foot high on one end. Um, and really the only other location that's, that's semi-level in the backyard is where all of our, our plumbing and electrical lines go. And so, uh, I, I actually have a, a letter from Action Buildings, you know, stating that, that the current location is the only place that they feel, uh, safe to, to have the, the shed. Um, in addition, as far as the, you know, neighborhood goes and everything, we've, we've put a lot of work in, uh, trying to make this, uh, this lot, you know, look nice. Um, you know, it's kind of an entrance to a, uh, to a neighborhood and, and I know, you know, that, that we kind of have a little bit of responsibility as, as the corner lot to, you know, kind of make that, that look ni- as nice as possible. Um, we, we've done a lot of work as far as, um, you know, landscaping, uh, you know, clearing it out, it was super overgrown when we first, uh, moved in there. Um, and, you know, we've put a lot of work, we take a lot of pride in, in our home and, um, we, I actually have, um, letters from neighbors here, if, if y'all are interested in seeing it in, in support of us keeping it where it is. Um, then, you know, they, we've had a lot of people come and say, you know, I think what y'all are doing is great and, you know, like I said, we, we didn't knowingly try to, to, to do anything, you know, against the, the ordinances and we tried to rectify it. Um, and it just doesn't seem like, like it would be possible, and so that's, that's when Matt recommended that we apply for a variance.
Do you have any more questions, Paul?
I don't.
Don't.
You have any more questions? All right, sir, thank you. At this time, we go open the public hearing. All right, Bill?
My name is Bill Harrison, I live in Northgate, uh, right down the street from Kyle and me, and, uh, I would respectfully request that y'all approve this variance, it's certainly a lot better looking corner than it was two or three years ago, the shed, there was a shed there. They upgraded and have actually gone above and beyond and put a privacy fence up and the, uh, existing foliage they let grow up taller than the building is, is not an eyesore, I've talked to several of the neighbors, they have no problem with it, uh. There are at least four sheds on corner lots in that neighborhood that are totally viewable from the street. Uh, there are probably ten or twelve other sheds, including my own, that are viewable from the street, they're in the back of the property. And I just, uh, I think we're just misunderstanding on some, some people's parts, and it's no fault of theirs, I would, uh, it's not an eyesore, it's not like it's sticking out like a sore thumb, I would just respectfully y'all approve this variance, but they, they, they are good stewards of the neighborhood. And, uh, and it's just, it's not an eyesore, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll ask you a question if you have any.
I don't. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All right, put it here in front of the board.
I make a motion, we, um, approve the three-foot side variant, side yard variance from the five-foot side yard setback requirement.
A second, Tab.
With motion and second, and a question or omission, if not, you're ready to vote?
Yes.
Signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Ladies likewise, motion carried. Matt?
Yes, sir, uh, that is all the business we have for you, uh, today, I thank you all for coming out, uh, so close to the holidays and wish you all Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Closing the public hearing at this time, all right? Uh, we'd like to make a motion, anybody like to make a motion to adjourn? Board member?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
In motion, second?
Second.
There any question or omission, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Ladies likewise, motion carried, we're meeting adjourned.
Claire, do I need to sign these?
Yeah, you need to sign them.
Right here.
Merry Christmas to y'all.
You too, have a good Christmas. Have a good Christmas.
You too.
Have a good, have a good Christmas.